Yeah.
Hey.
Good, how are you?
You dressed good.
So what are we doing here?
Real good. Real good. How's Mike's?
Good, good. Just tired of the rain.
Ah, there's the... Ah, okay. Ready?
You're okay?
You'll keep it moving?
David, what is, what is that? The Wi-Fi code?
I think it changes.
Okay.
I think it changes. Let me check and see if it's...
You all ready? We'll go ahead and call the June seventeenth Fisher City Council meeting in order. If everyone would please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, two to a republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next announcements, Spark Fishers. Somebody here?
Uh, no.
Unofficially. Uh, Spark Fishers, 2019, kicks off the twenty-eighth, Friday the twenty-eighth, with a concert pre-concert down here at the amphitheater with Tonic and Vertical Horizon. Tickets can be accessed at ticket stops throughout the community. Visit sparkfishers.com. And then the full day celebration on Saturday, the twenty-ninth, five K, farmers market, farmers market, uh, street festival, parade and fireworks, all day long, sparkfishers.com.
Very good. I should have said this earlier, but if anyone is here for items seven and nine on the agenda, they have been pulled and we won't be hearing them tonight. Just want to point that out. Next, we have the state champs and ultimate frisbee. There is someone here, either a coach or another representative, who'd wish to introduce the team and tell us about your feet.
First off, thank you for having us here. It means a lot to our program. We just entered our fifth year as a program. Two years ago, we had a goal of winning the state championship this year, and through hard work, focus and dedication, these guys back here, they achieved that goal and won the state championship this year. Overall, we had a very successful season. We participated in five different tournaments, and we ended up winning three of those, with the most recent one being the state championship. So I just want to say thank you for having us here once again.
You're welcome. Unfortunately, the mayor's not here, but deputy mayor? We have some certificates of everyone from the team who come up. Plush.
Plush.
Anyone else who wants to come up or walk and take pictures up here?
Look up, guys.
Okay, I don't see any proclamations or presentations. Is that true? Okay, very good. Finance committee report. John?
Thank you, Rich. Finance committee met last Wednesday, and one or a number of items specifically to submit to the council here for approval, item six A on the consent agenda, item eleven, item twelve, item thirteen, item fourteen in the budget financial area, we're recommending for approval tonight. Other items that we discussed during the meeting, number one, we're looking at doing a deep dive on where we at on our TIF financing and how those funds are working, also looking at a year-to-date budget for where we at for 2019 purposes, and certainly looking forward as we start the budgetary process for the 2020 year. Lastly, just as where, as some of you may be aware, we are audited by an independent accounting firm called BKD, which is a regional slash national CPA firm, one of the few cities in the state that has audited financial statements. And again, just to have that additional independence, additional transparency, they met with me a few weeks ago, and actually they requested an extension of time to prepare the audit for the same, the single reason, which is understandable, we switched to accounting software. We're on a new software system now, and to actually have tests to be able to make sure that they can rely upon those tests, they decided to extend that out, which is totally understandable. So that's the Budget Finance Committee report.
See what you did, John?
I know.
Scared them all off.
You know, as accountant, I have that, I have that tendency. I'll clear a room.
Keep talking, most everybody will leave.
Yeah.
We'll give them a minute to leave.
I can clear a room quicker than anybody. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, John. All right, next, the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete.
Second.
Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank Pete. Item seven has been withdrawn. Item eight, item R zero six one seven one nine D, is this Megan?
I don't think that's the right thing. All right, well, that hopefully loads. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development. Tonight, I have the project agreement to approve a new multifamily development at Fishers Point Boulevard and Lantern Road. There are fourteen properties, that Skanel Properties has assembled with the assistance of Gratteson, as part of their development, moving south along Lantern Road, and I've put together an incredible project, a $29 million new investment for approximately 180 to 190 multifamily units. There will be two different buildings that you can see on the lower left rendering. The, there'll be apartments on both sides of Meadows Drive, then an initial, an additional leasing center and some retail that'll be in that front building as well. The great thing about this property, or about this project, excuse me, is that Skanel is requesting a 95% TIF capture where they will actually purchase the bonds. They're also asking for a waiver of impact fees for this new construction project, and as part of this, we're allowing them access to our stormwater infrastructure that's in place right now as well. Tonight, we've got Josh Reha here. If, Josh, if you want to come up and say a few words?
Megan summarized the project pretty well. We're very excited about this potential project. Again, we feel like this is a very important gateway to the Nickel Plate District as an entry to get up north towards 116th, and, you know, we've been very conscious about the design so far. We've been continuing to design, I think, since we met at the executive session last, and we're very excited about the project.
The great thing about this is that it really, as Josh mentioned, is a bookmark and an entryway into the Nickel Plate District. So tying into the development that's happening north of there, and then obviously further into the Nickel Plate District, they've been super cognizant of the existing residential in the area, that this will be three stories, so low impact, but be another great option for housing in the Nickel Plate District. Again, access to Cheney Creek and the Nickel Plate Trail, so we're happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Questions for council?
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by John.
Make a couple of comments. I'll, I'll be voting negative on this. I think I've mentioned this in the executive session, but just for the larger audience, this is one area that, we've got very few areas where we have the ability for some for-sale product. Up at the northern end, Gratteson's done a wonderful job with some of their row houses, which are for sale, kind of a custom level, and if you go down, really kind of, I'll use in quotes, a small couple blocks or two down Morgan Drive, across Morgan Drive, down Meadows Drive, and then Lantern Road, there's a very small pocket that you could have for that, and my hope was, that would continue all the way to the south, and when this product goes in, great company, great product, but it's just in that area. What'll happen to the north of this particular property is probably someone will come in next and say, we'll need to have condos here, or kind of a downshift to the next level, and at least very small amount of property left for the for-sale product. And I think in the future, when the whole Nickel Plate area is built out, you'll have a lot of multifamily residential, you have a lot of retail, a lot of energy and activity along 116th Street, and as you pull a little bit further to the north and to the south, I think it's important to start to look at areas where you can have some of that for-sale product. You have very small areas that that could. Sorry, allergies are hitting me on the voice, but you've got a very small area, and my feeling here was, I think it's important to protect that area for that for-sale opportunity.
So, I don't know if there are any other comments, but I know motions have been made and seconded. Any other comments of council or questions? Okay. Motion was made by Pete and seconded by John for the record, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So just for the record, the three noes were Cecilia, Todd and David? Okay. Passes. Thank you. Okay, item nine has been withdrawn, I guess ten as well. Item eleven, zero six one seven one nine A.
Megan Spurgs. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The item before you is just a technical amendment, amending the ordinance that was approved last month related to the Nickel Plate Properties Bond. Basically, this technical change is regarding flexibility of issue, so all it does is change the denominations available for sale related to the bonds, technically the bands that will be sold. If there are no questions, I'd ask that we pass it on, suspend the rules and pass on for second and third reading.
Any questions or comments, council?
Just want to make sure there's no public hearing, Chris? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selena? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, one abstention, sorry. Thank you, David.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
I will vote on, yeah, I apologize. I'll vote on that now the vote's happening.
Oh, okay. All right, so David's withdrawing his abstention, so we have everyone in favor of...
Of just moving forward on third reading.
Okay.
Yes, right.
Got it. Okay, very good. So we can now have the motion for approval?
Motion to approve on first reading.
By Pete, second by Selena. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? One. David, thank you. So that passes. All right, item twelve, zero six one seven one nine B.
All right, and for the record, this does not need a public hearing. I think it was listed on there, but it does not.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
This is the ordinance, excuse me, authorizing the taxable economic development bond, series 2019 A and 2019 B. So this is related to the SPF fifteen project, and so there will be two bonds. The 2019 A is a pure TIF bond, our first pure TIF bond that we will be doing, and then the 2019 B will be a payable predominantly and purely from the TIF, but it will have the property tax backing, as we've previously discussed with some of the other bonds. 2019 A is the not to exceed eighteen and a half, and then the 2019 B, not to exceed 15.5, and these are all related to land acquisition, demolition, deconstruction of the parking garage and related infrastructure. These have all had their public hearings through the Town Hall Building Corporation and the Redevelopment Commission, and then earlier today, the EDC approved the project and held their public hearing, so this is the last step for these bonds to be issued. There's no questions, I'll ask to suspend the rules and have first, second, third reading and pass.
Again, noting it is not a public hearing?
Not a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion made by Pete, second by Todd, all in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve on first reading.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Motion passes. Item thirteen, is this also a public hearing or no?
Yes, thirteen and fourteen are public hearings.
Okay.
So I could, I'll talk about thirteen and fourteen just together for ease, and then we can hold the public hearings and you can pass separately, but item thirteen is a request to appropriate additional seizure forfeiture funds, and essentially, these are the money that are taken in during different traffic stops and different arrests that become property of the city once the case has reached its conclusion, and we don't traditionally budget these during the annual budget process, so the police department has identified some needs from the seizure funds, such as they're going to purchase a new drone, and they're also purchasing trauma kits to standardize their fleet, so that's what item thirteen relates to. Then item fourteen is additional continuing education funds, and so this was identified by the police department as some additional need for this year in their training and their educational requirements that they have, and so the continuing ed funds are related to police department, as it's meant, as it sounds, additional education needs. There's no questions, I'll step aside for public hearing.
Okay. Before we open it up to members of the public, are there any questions or comments from council members? Okay. So this is a public hearing. If there are members of the public who wish to speak, if you'd come up, introduce yourself, state your name and address for the record, you'll be given three minutes in which to speak. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Yes, sir?
I'm not complaining too much, but wanted to bring some up. I don't know if anyone drove by Cumberland in 106 and has smelled that lift station driving by. Maybe I'm the only one. I wanted to see if this ever came up.
Are you, are you speaking to the items here, thirteen and fourteen?
No. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. There will be a point later on in the agenda that if you have public comments...
Well, now you know.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll, we'll come back to you. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak to items thirteen or fourteen? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
And I'll make a motion to approve item thirteen.
Pete has, Pete has made a motion, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
And I'll make a motion to approve fourteen.
Motion by Pete, second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. All right, thirteen, fourteen, pass. Moving to item fifteen. Item R zero five two zero one nine B.
Can't wait to hear this one.
Defined as the goats.
Again, for the record, my name is Andrew McGee, I'm planner with the City of Fishers. The item before you tonight, resolution R O five twenty nineteen B, of course, came to you guys in May. We heard your comments, you asked us to take another look at it, to narrow our request down, so we've done that. So this time, this resolution is requesting an exemption from the UDO to specifically allow for four goats for Riverside Intermediate School, and this is only for Riverside Intermediate School, only for the four goats. So this is not an all-encompassing resolution like it was in May. So I'll go over this briefly again for people that weren't here at the last meeting. Riverside Intermediate School, shown here on the west side of Fishers, highlighted in red, they currently have an existing outdoor education space where they have chickens, something that was approved a few years ago, something that we've seen at a couple other locations. Today, Riverside Intermediate School is requesting the addition of four goats, and these are small goats, and I have a photo of one this time, so you can actually get a better understanding of what we're talking about. They're requesting to add four goats to their outdoor learning area, shown here. This is a map provided from the school. This has not changed from the last time we presented this, so they're still proposing the same area, the same size for these goats. Some additional information that we got from the school this time is these are miniature breeds, and we're talking the size of a dog. I mean, we're talking on a child that's maybe only two feet tall, so I will show you a photo. Last time, we had made the suggestion that there was just going to be one goat, they've actually clarified that they will have two pairs, so they will be paired socially, so there won't be any concerns that we have from an animal welfare standpoint with, you know, animals maybe being on their own, so they will be kept with others. These are goats that have been socialized with children, adults, in very similar situations. They've actually been, these particular ones have been at Riverside Intermediate in the past for a world learning day, I believe. Additionally, we have a member of the staff from Riverside Intermediate here today, Kevin Johnson, over here. He has thirteen years of experience raising goats and other similar animals, and he would be the primary staff member taking care of these at the school. So he has additional, or if you guys have any additional questions, he would be the one to ask as far as the caretaking, security concerns that were raised last time. This is a photo of his son, actually. He was six years old in this picture, and this is the size of the goat we're talking about. So this is a very, very small animal, so I think the area that we've shown that the school's proposing, we don't have any concerns from a welfare standpoint, just due to the size, the type of animal these are, and again, they've been socialized previously with these exact same children. So if you have any additional questions, Mr. Johnson is here, he can answer those for you. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you wish to say anything now, sir?
Sure, David, so I think... My name's Kevin Johnson, I've taught for Hamilton-Southeastern since 2002. Like Mr. McGee said, I've worked with small livestock for the last thirteen years. I have seen lots of benefits. I'm a suburban kid who grew up with a cat. Since being an adult, I've had a lot more exposure to livestock and just varieties of animals. I have seen benefits from, my son's on the autism spectrum, having a unique experience with an animal has been able to provide a conversational bridge and social bridge for him with his peers that would not otherwise be possible. We've seen similar benefits for the students at Riverside Intermediate with our chicken program, having kind of that third party, that two kids that would not necessarily have something in common can, can meet conversationally, can meet socially regarding that, that other animal. So I think there's a lot of benefit that I've seen, not only in my own family, but with the students at Riverside, so the possibility of expanding this program for an even greater kind of biological variety, there's a lot of staff support, a lot of staff excitement. Mr. McGee referenced that there has been some concern, for instance, what happens over the summer when nobody's at school or nobody's in session. Taking care of animals is a full-time gig. With the inception of the chicken program, we tried to lay a foundation that we're responsible for these living things, start to finish, full lifespan. With the chickens, we're in our third summer tending to them. I sent an email to my staff asking for support over the summer, and I had the entirety of summer break covered in fifteen minutes with four staff members on the waiting list that were willing to fill in. Of those staff members, when we've talked about the possibility of having goats added to this, everybody's on board. We were approaching a quarter of the staff that is willing to come in on their own time, vacation time, weekends, so that they can make sure that these creatures in our care are taken care of.
Can you add my cat to your care?
All right, any questions or comments from council?
Make a motion to approve.
Well, I'm going to second, but I'm going to, it's quick comment, since I was the one who brought up kind of the ludicrous nature of animals that we had in the original ordinance, which I appreciate staff's work to kind of drive this down, and I know I was being a little bit far-fetched, but I appreciate you coming here and kind of delineating this, what's going to happen here and who's going to take care of them and all that kind of stuff, because it falls back in the city again, you know? You put Buffalo and everything else over there, it's going to run into the city, they're going to come after us. So again, I don't necessarily have a problem with what you guys are asking for, I appreciate the staff taking the extra look at it, kind of hone this thing in to make sure that we actually did have caretakers, we did have proper fencing, we did have proper care, we did have all those things, so again, I appreciate the work by that, and for that a second, so...
All right, good, I'm sorry, who made the, was Pete?
John made the motion.
John made the motion, second by Pete. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item sixteen, zero five two zero one nine. Okay, item sixteen, oh five two zero one nine.
This is the third reading of an annexation, right?
It is.
Correct.
Okay, I don't need to steal your thunder, Megan, but, you know, since it's the third reading of annexation that we've seen two times before, unless, unless council has any questions on the third reading of a voluntary annexation, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Second.
Pete in his ever-efficient mind, second by Todd, I'm sorry, motion made by Pete, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
And I'm gonna go down to item seventeen. Again, this is the, the same location that we talked about twice prior, Megan?
Correct.
Correct. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve on this third reading of a voluntary annexation.
All right, motion made by Pete, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, thank you. Item eighteen.
Good job, Megan.
Thank you, Megan.
Tough work, yeah.
Woman of few words.
Zero six one seven one nine C.
For the record, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you is for requests to rezone a property from employment node to P U D commercial. So the subject property is generally located on the west side of Exit Five Parkway, north of one hundred and sixteen Street. The petitioner is requesting a rezone to a site-specific P U D for their headquarters and standalone car wash. The property is located to the east of Top Golf and north of the Riverview Health Urgent Care Facility that is currently under construction. The proposed headquarters will house offices as well as a research and development center where they plan to develop new technology for their car washes. These technologies are to be tested onsite at the new car wash, which will also be used as their main location to train new employees. Shown here is the proposed concept plan. The petitioner has worked with staff to address all comments related to overall site design. The site meets most of the U D O requirements, but alternative standards are being requested for parking lot, accessory structures, and landscaping requirements. A technical review of the site will be completed during the tack process. Shown here is the typical traffic flow for vehicles accessing the car wash. I want to be clear that this is just a typical traffic flow, it's not the only one. And so cars will enter the site from Exit Five Parkway. A right out will be provided onto Exit Five, Exit Five Parkway when exiting the car wash tunnel, or cars may exit onto the southern private drive if utilizing the vacuum stations. Highlighted here is the pedestrian network. Connections will be provided between the office building and car wash and from both buildings to the perimeter sidewalks. A patio with a second-story outdoor deck will be provided on the south side of the office building as a pedestrian amenity. The petitioner has provided an exhibit showing the onsite stacking during the high-demand hours. During these times, the site will be able to accommodate over forty-six stacking spaces. Crew will block off the southernmost entrance of Exit Five Parkway, requiring cars enter to the north where stacking will occur on their site rather than within the public right-of-way. The P U D states that all stacking must occur on the subject real estate. Here's the landscaping plan. Perimeter landscaping will be provided to help screen the vacuum stations. And during planned commission, a commitment was made to have additional medium-sized planted, adding along, added along that southern drive to help screen those vacuum stations, and the petitioner has accommodated that request. P U D committee approval was attained, obtained for the car wash, and the building has been designed with four-sided architecture. These elevations will be incorporated into the P U D ordinance to illustrate the required architecture. The petitioner will come back at a later date for approval of the office building. The petitioner is here to speak as well, and staff is available to help answer any questions.
Thank you, Megan. Petitioner?
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fagery Baker Daniels, and I'm pleased to be here representing Crew Car Wash tonight. With me from Crew is our Director of Real Estate, Mr. Justin Fuhr. And also Ken Kern from Sunbeam, who is the property owner, is here as well tonight. First off, we just want to thank the city council for your support of the, of this location and the tax abatement that was approved in the recent weeks. We appreciate the mayor's guidance as well, and Tony and Megan particularly in working through the new site that we have found together for this. Megan did a great job explaining the history and the approvals that we've already been through. We want to also thank particularly Sunbeam for their work and associate trying to help accommodate this new location. And we did make the two changes that were requested, the plan commission and the P U D committee. And we're here tonight to answer any questions you might have, otherwise respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any questions or comments by council?
No, there's gonna be no questions at all. Again, I appreciate everything that was done by staff, by Ken and, and Sunbeam, by Crew, and the mayor's office to get this thing done. I think it's a terrific project, great flagship for a new corporate headquarters, right on a very visible thoroughfare here in, in Fisher. So I am a hundred percent in favor of this, and I will make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Cecilia, second by Cecilia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Oh, one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you get the abstention? Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Item nineteen, oh six one seven one nine D.
For the record, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you is for rezone at the property of one three five seven seven East one hundred and twenty-sixth Street from R-two residential to P U D commercial for the new location of a State Farm Insurance Agency. The subject property is located on the south side of one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, west of Oleo Road. It's currently zoned R-two and is surrounded to the south by R-two zoning and to the north. To the east of that property is the recently approved commercial, C-one commercial with conditions for the Remax site. Council approved that last month. And to the west of the property is the, is a residential subdivision. The property is currently outside of city limits, but does meet contiguity requirements for annexation. The petitioner is proposing to remodel the current home into a State Farm Insurance Agency office building to accommodate approximately four employees. Eight parking spaces are proposed, including one ADA space. All of the healthy trees will be maintained on the property with one unhealthy tree targeted for removal. The house is currently on well and septic, but will be required to hook up to sewer and water for the change of use. The detached garage will remain onsite for storage. The petitioner is proposing a site-specific P U D for the rezone request. Uses are limited to financial, professional, and general office. No medical office uses will be permitted. The property will be required to share access to one hundred and twenty-sixth Street with the adjoining property to the east. Lighting will be full cutoff, maximum of fifteen feet tall, and signage will be residential in character. Architectural improvements will be required to be approved by the P U D committee. Any new office building would be required to, to be residential in character and substantially similar to the architectural exhibits that were provided in the P U D ordinance. Future improvements to the property would require P U D committee approval of the architecture and a revised concept plan. Per the P U D requirements, any future building is limited to a maximum floor area of five thousand square feet. Improvements to the exterior of the home will be made, including painting of the siding and trim and removing the existing awnings and replacing the shutters. Staff has reviewed the overall one hundred and twenty-sixth Street and Oleo area for land use and traffic concerns related to the commercial development. There are five residential outlets identified here, which include both the subject property and the adjoining Remax location, which could potentially redevelop as commercial around this intersection. These outlets may no longer be appealing as residential uses due to the direct access onto major thoroughfares. Stack, staff would recommend if redeveloped to commercial, the uses be limited to general professional office. Staff has worked with A N F Engineering to determine if these conversions would cause issues from a traffic perspective, and their findings, as provided in the staff report, showed minimal impacts to traffic in this area. Staff is supportive of the rezone request to P U D. The petitioner has worked with staff to address concerns related to site access and to ensure the residential character of the property is preserved. Staff recommends city council approve the rezone with the condition that the petitioner voluntarily annex into city limits. Petitioner and staff are available to help answer any questions, but petitioner doesn't have any additional comments at this time.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments from council? It sounds like petitioner is not wishing to speak. Questions or comments at this point?
Again, I was the only no on planning commission. I'll be a no again tonight. I'm sticking with the twenty forty plan. This is residential. Again, I, I think that we need to look at, you know, when we're doing these type of economic development projects, that, that they're substantive. And, and while I have no issues with either one of the businesses that are going in there, and I believe it'll pass anyways, you know, again, when we start taking a look at this, it's not what happens with the, the product today, it's what happens in ten, twenty, thirty years down the road. And, you know, alls it does is take an act of the next council to change it and open it up to other things. And then, then you've got that. Again, twenty forty plan said residential. I think it's a residential corridor. I think we've got massive traffic issues up on Oleo Road, which we don't control during peak school hours. And, and for those reasons, I think there's a much better location for this other than there. That being said, I'm gonna leave that as my piece.
Thank you, sir.
Since, since, I was gonna stay quiet, but since Pete spoke, I will give the other side, which I totally disagree with Pete. Fisher's supposed to be a smart, vibrant entrepreneurial city. I've been an entrepreneur for fifty years. And entrepreneurs, small entrepreneurs like what we're approving tonight, cannot afford million-dollar per acre ground. And if the city of Fishers wants to expand with entrepreneurs, this is exactly what we do. Take old houses that can never be sold and work with the entrepreneur who wants to invest his money. We, he gets nothing from the city, no TIF, no fees, anything else that the big boys get. And this is exactly what we should be doing to promote the city of Fishers. And the United States of America was built on entrepreneurs, and Fishers is being expanded on entrepreneurs, and this is a great example of it tonight.
Any further questions or comments from council?
Just, just comments. If I recall correctly, this, this business would have to hook up to H S C Utilities, et cetera. So another septic tank offline, correct? I mean, you'd have to cook city utilities, H S C, our water, our sewer and everything.
Yep, correct.
I actually went out and walked the property when we voted last month on the other property, walked over the other property and, and although I, I see both sides here, I have to, you know, I, I look at what this could be, and we gotta start somewhere. Right now, it's not a part of Fishers, it's unincorporated Fall Creek, isn't it?
Correct.
And this gets brought into our inventory. They, they, they've become part of Fishers. In addition, we do have dropped hopefully down the road to continually improve this. But, but the, the petitioner is doing some things to, to make it better than just a home. He's gonna hang a State Farm sign on. The other thing I look at is traffic. Right there, you only do a right-out, right-in, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, so we can't do a left-hand turn. And the nature of the business as it stands right now, which is something we gotta be attentive to, is it's an insurance agent. I don't know how many folks actually, if you think out how many times I've been to see my insurance agent in the last ten years. I haven't. Everything's done via mail, via email. So, so I, I, I wouldn't look the property. I wouldn't actually walk around. There's some extra land there to the west that could be, you know, something else be done with at some point in time. Although I, I respect both counselors, and, and I'm, I'm gonna vote the way I'm gonna vote. I, I'm gonna be supportive of this. So I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, motion by John to approve a second by, second by who? David? All right. Motion, motion to approve by John and second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One, no abstentions? Very good. Motion passes. Thank you. Item twenty, oh six one seven one nine E.
For the record, Jesse Bocell, Planning and Zoning. The item before you tonight is ordinance oh six one seven one nine E. It is a text amendment to the Britton Falls P U D ordinance. It will amend area four A Turnberry. The site is located at the corner of Atlantic Road and one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. The neighborhood is, went through a, a text amendment in two thousand and seventeen that applied to the whole subdivision that was adopted by council. Just to give you some highlights of that amendment, they were allowed to have two-car garages that were side-loaded, rear-loaded, or angle-loaded. And fifty percent of the lots were allowed to have three-car garages front-loaded. And then the amendment also sought to modify the minimum living unit square footage of area for a, for single, or one-story dwelling to two thousand square feet and two-story dwelling to twenty-five hundred. Petitioner is now seeking an additional amendment that would only apply to sections three and four. Sections three and four are in red, what you see there. And then the current ninety-foot lots right here are sections one and two. One and two will remain the same. The text amendment would decrease the lot width from ninety feet to seventy feet, decreasing, decreasing the overall minimum lot size from eleven thousand square feet to nine thousand square feet, and would allow all lots in sections three and four to have three-car front-loaded garages, and would decrease the aggregate side setback from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet. Overall, there would be an increase of fifteen homes, taking the total build out from one hundred and thirty-seven lots to one hundred and fifty-two. Just, we, we did receive public comment in the initial phases of this text amendment back in February. Gradison and the staff has worked with those that had, had public comment and concerns, and those concerns have been lessened and now are supportive of this. Plan commission was, gave unanimous favor of this back on June seventh, and we are supportive of this as well, as becau- because this is, goes with the rest of the Britton Falls P U D and other neighborhoods surrounding the area. If you have any further questions about this, the petitioner is here, and I will also answer any questions that you have.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from council?
Brad, you didn't hear anything further from residents?
No. I've been working with the developer. He was nice enough to invite me to all the neighborhood meetings, almost the neighborhood meetings. And the concerns that I personally had, he addressed. The concerns that the residents that live there, he had, he addressed. So I think as a developer, he's done everything that the neighborhood has asked and everything that I've asked as a councilman and a plan commission member. So I appreciate, it's taken months to get through it, but he has listened and responded, so I appreciate it.
Very good. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Todd, second by Pete. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. All right, is there any unfinished business or new business? So, sir, you'll have your opportunity. This is the community comment. So those wishing to speak will be given three minutes in which to speak. I know we have at least one. Do you want to be the first, sir? Come on up. Yeah, please state your name and address for the record.
So I'm Frank McKee. Live at nine seven nine eight Fortune Drive. And as I said, you know, I drive by this roundabout quite often, and there's odors coming out of there all the time, like, has anyone said anything or done anything about this? I read an article that, on, on the web, that this has been going on since two thousand and ten. And I know the city of Fishers isn't, doesn't manage that utility, but just wondering if anything's been done, if anything has been said to the utility. Just wanted to touch base and see what's going on.
Rich, can I answer that question? Yeah, absolutely. Frank, I've actually, I've actually met with the leadership of H S Utilities and just told them that, you know, th- this is not acceptable. I mean, I live in Windermere, which is just to the south of that, of that particular roundabout. And, you know, my neighbor calls it a rounded butt because of the smell.
It's the inmates running the asylum, too. I mean, like, oh, it's fine.
We've had a number of, they've actually spent a tremendous amount of money trying to improve that lift station. And unfortunately, right now, especially with all the rain that we've had, it is, it's, it's gonna have a little bit of an odor to it.
It's a disaster.
Yeah, it's, it's really not, it's, it's really not a, 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 I wouldn't say necessarily well-planned, but they're, they're trying, they are attempting to try and do things. They've spent probably a hundred thousand dollars on improvements here in the last twelve months to try and address it.
There are new, modern ways, from what I've read, you know? I don't know if they've looked into some of those, but, you know, again, I just wanted to see if there's some pressure being applied to them.
We're actually, yeah, well, and, and I'm more than happy to reach out to them again and let them know that, you know, the residents aren't, aren't happy with how this, this lift station performing and what, what can we do to consist in that process? And I know they're gonna come back and say, it's because of a lot of rain and it's just, it's been difficult.
That's what they say. Oh, the levels are reasonable, but, you know, like I said, it's kind of the inmates running the asylum over there, so I just wanted to touch base.
So.
No one can like that. I know this is not a glamorous subject, but it's not good.
Thank you, thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
John, thank you for your help in trying to resolve that. Are there any other members of the public wishing to make a comment? If so, please, again, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sharon Martin. I'm at eighty-five forty Shoe Overlook Drive. I didn't have a question when I came in here, but as I sit here, I think, yeah, I think I have one. I'm sure this has probably come up before, but have we considered a dog park? Instead of me having to go down to Carmel, or? Instead of me having to go down to Carmel, or if I'm gonna pay out money for a dog park, I'd rather pay for it to my community?
She agreed.
Is there, I think there's one, yeah, there's one by Sand Creek, you know, so Fishers High School is, and there's Sand Creek Elementary Intermediate, and then you keep going east, it's right there on the corner down there.
That is our dog park?
It's not a city lot, it's private.
It's private, okay. Will we be getting a city one?
I am, anybody aware within parks of that discussion? Well, I'll tell you, we'll look into it.
Well, that's what I would like to put forth at this meeting, that we get a city dog park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
I think there's one that's part of the new trail, is there? I might have missed that one.
Being planned, or?
I think it's in the planning process.
Right, that whole thing is on the planning process, so potentially, it has been discussed there, but nothing's been noted out and paid for, so.
John, do you wanna make any comments to that? John, John's been.
Yeah, there's parts, if you look at the master plan, sure, come on up. As part of the nickel plate mashment, there is gonna be some, a dog park amenity as part of that. So, we'll take a look at the, on our website about the, with the mashment, I believe you'll see that there. And I certainly, that's an issue, I mean, I've got a dog, too, I walk every night and every day, and it'd be nice to have a park to take it to, let him, let her run and enjoy it, so.
Well, since I haven't seen those plans, do we have a timeframe for that?
We start this fall.
Okay, I'll take a look.
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Anybody else in the public wishing to make, yes, Doug. We're gonna be especially watchful of the three-minute limit for you, sir.
I just wanted to know, this gentleman is not a resident of Fishers, but I'm still gonna, I'm just joking, because he knows I'm joking. Good to see you.
Hi, Doug Allman, one six one two four, East one twenty-sixth Street. Hey, I just wanted to strongly encourage you, I hear, I understand, I believe there's a roundabout being built at one hundred and twenty-sixth Street and Southeastern, am I correct on that? I think, I think I read that with Larry. I, I hope you make that force spokes, at least a stub going off there, and I would strongly urge you to look at extending one hundred and twenty-sixth Street on to connect up with one hundred and twenty-sixth Street at Cynthia Road, given you see there's more houses going in at Turnberry, Piper Glen's being developed, there's, there's a lot of housing going on out there with, and with the school system, the new, the new elementary, the hedge, and, you know, Brad lives there, I live there, and I'm just saying, we really need to increase that throughput through there and take off that sharp turn there that everybody has to use now, and connect one hundred and twenty-sixth Street up, so I would still encourage you to look into that. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
I have to, I have to agree with Doug. It's on the thoroughfare plan that way, but there's certain individuals that don't wanna construct it that way, but I have to agree with Doug. Everybody that lives in that northeast quadrant needs something besides Southeastern to go west, and it is needed. Thanks, Doug.
Noted, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I mean, again, I'm with her. I didn't prior to, but now I've sat through this meeting, I'm like, yeah, I'm gonna say it. So, Courtney Murray.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Courtney Murray, one zero six six five Terragon Court. I love Fishers, and I don't wanna leave here. My family has outgrown our home. We'd love to have a residential development still in, it would be West Fishers. I feel like at this point, for my family to get to a larger home, we either have to go way out towards Geist or way up north, and I always see areas, you know, driving by, and I'm like, God, that would be a great residential development. At this point, we're like into, or, yeah, East Carmel, and as much as I love Carmel, I really would love to stay in Fishers. So, I think me and David George have shared emails back and forth, and I think somebody else in the planning committee. So, just some feedback, I know when I talk to people in my neighborhood, they feel the same, and Windermere is, you know, I think that perfect step up from where I am, which is Berkeley Ridge, but a little bit older homes.
Good feedback, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the community comment section.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn by Pete, second by Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.